So I'm going to call to order the Currituck County Planning Board meeting of January the 9th, 2018. Please rise for pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing we're going to do is talk about disqualifications. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the board today? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in that particular matter involved. Does this apply to any of you?
Amen.
Okay, let the record show, no, we're all good. We have a quorum of six present, so we can officially have this meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
Seconded.
Motion is made and approved to approve the -- yeah, never mind. Motion is made and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Agenda is approved. I will also entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our December 12th, 2017 meeting.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second to motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Minutes are approved.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we proceed with new business, I'd like to have a floor for just a moment.
Have yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Craddock, a member of the Planning Board. And according to Page 1, Section 2 of the Currituck County Board Rules of Procedure, a board member can serve two consecutive terms. Planning Board members may also continue to serve after their terms have expired until their successors have been appointed by the Board of Commissioners. I would like to take a moment to formally recognize one of our board members who has reached the end of their two consecutive terms. I'd like to ask Ms. Carol Bell to come forward and stand by me in the area near the podium.
I gotta go out there.
You gotta go out there.
She's proud of you.
Woo. Y'all need some new chairs. Snag them shirts.
I want to present this to you, Carol. And I want you to take a moment and make a little short statement.
Speak up a little bit, Stephen, please.
I will. First, I'd like to say a few words about this very dedicated woman and her family. They have dedicated their lives to Currituck County, her father did before her, she has. And I want to say what a pleasure it's been working with you and alongside you past five years that we've been together. As a planning board member, you've played an important and significant role in the county's planning process for hundreds of projects over the years. And as the chairman of the planning board, you have shown your passion, your respect, dedication, faultfulness to the citizens. And you've also shared your visions for what Currituck should be and what it will eventually be. Your fellow planning board members and the planning staff would like to say thank you for all you have sacrificed and done for our county. With that being said, I'd like to present to you the resolution of appreciation. Now, I'll read to you all the resolution of appreciation on this page here. Whereas Ms. Carol Bell has faithfully served as a member of Currituck County's Planning Board from January 1, 2013, until December 31, 2017, and during this time, served as a Planning Board Vice Chairman for the year 2016, and served as Planning Board Chairman for the year 2017. And whereas Ms. Bell has devoted numerous hours and energies to serving this capacity, and whereas Ms. Bell has served as an integral part in shaping the future of Currituck County, and whereas Ms. Bell always acted in the best interests of the citizens of Currituck County as a member of the planning board, and showed steadfast leadership and responsible judgment during her tenure as both Planning Board Vice Chairman and Planning Board Chairman. And whereas the citizens of Currituck County will enjoy a higher quality of life as a result of Ms. Bell's dedication, now therefore being resolved by the Currituck County Planning Board members, and they would like to extend their sincere appreciation and thanks to Ms. Bell for her dedication and service to Currituck County while a member of the planning board and as the former Planning Board Vice Chairman and Planning Board Chairman on behalf of me, Stephen Craddock, Shay Ballance, John McCollough, Dana Overstreet, Fred Whiteman, Tim Thomas, and Jeff O'Brien. And we also have one other item for you.
We have one.
This is applied with the gavel. It says, "Carol Bell, Planning Board, 2013 to 2017, Vice Chairman 2016 and Chairman 2017. We thank you for everything you've done for us and for our county. We love you."
The only thing I have to say is I've enjoyed my time with this board, and this is going to make me cry. Please bear with me. My father was a county commissioner for several terms, and he would be proud.
Madam Chairman is very surprised, but thank you all. You'll have to give me a minute to get my composure back. Okay, under new business, Item A, PB 13-29, TFP LLC. The subject property located at 1149 Persimmon Street, Corrala, North Carolina, is zoned conditional general business subject to a conceptual development plan that allows construction of a 10-bedroom inn. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the conditional zoning to allow construction of a 12-bedroom inn. Ginny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you stated, this is a request for amended conditional zoning. The property is owned by TFP LLC, Twitty Family Partnership, and is located at 1149 Persimmon Street. Get you oriented to the property there is aerial photography. The current zoning is general business, conditional general business, subject to the conceptual development plan that was approved by the Board of Commissioners in January 2014. That plan was for a proposed 10-bedroom inn. The applicant is requesting approval for a 12-bedroom inn, and there are also some minor changes to that conceptual development plan, one of those being a slight shift in the location of the building, not in the footprint, and also in the drive area, making a driveway that enters from Corral Village Road and exits on Persimmon Street. The applicant has also submitted concurrently an application for a major site plan approval. So that can be approved once this conditional zoning amendment, if it is approved by this board and the Board of Commissioners. So at -- let's see here, just get you oriented. You can see that it's already zoned conditional general business. It's in Corral Village. It is north of the chapel and west of Corral Classic Vacations and west of Ocean Trail. And you can see the neighboring zoning is SFO, Single Family Outer Banks, and there is also some conditional general business across the street where Twitty Operations Building and some parking areas are. And here's the land use plan map that shows that it is mostly in a full service, and there's a small portion that is conservation. And here's just the conceptual development plan for the inn, including the 15 proposed parking spaces and the entrance from off of Corral Village Road as well as Persimmon Street. Keep in mind that as part of your decision, you're required to adopt a statement of consistency and reasonableness, that the adoption or the decision is consistent with the applicable county adopted plans, and explain why it's reasonable and in the public interest. And if you look in your staff report in your packet, Page 11 and 12, actually on Page 11, there are the review standards that you can consider when determining this, and then Page 12, consistency and reasonableness statements for your review. And they're also here on PowerPoint. Do you guys want me to go over all of those individually or now? Okay. And so the TRC recommends approval subject to the following conditions: provide pedestrian friendly circulation from buildings to the street right-of-way, building construction to be reflective of the Corral Village historic architecture, and the property shall be developed in conformance with the site plan set prepared by Quabel dated November 22nd, 2017, that's in your agenda packet, and the architectural plans prepared by CPAA dated November 2nd, that's also in your agenda packet, subject to major site plan approval by the county's technical review committee. Do you have any further questions at this time?
When did you -- or when was the conditional zoning permitted before?
It was approved by the Board of Commissioners on January 6th, 2014.
Three years, four years.
Four years ago.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, is there someone representing the applicant? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Saunders, and I work for Quabel and Associates, and we've been hired by TFP LLC in order to do the site plan as well as the conditional rezoning. We're located at 8466 Carrot Oak Highway. Jenny gave a great overview of the project. We are moving from the previously approved 10 bedrooms up to 12 bedrooms. It's just more cost efficient for the owner to do that. The site plan is going through the technical review committee process, and it will get all of the state permits that are required. We do already have approval from NC DOT for the access to Corral Village Road, and we have erosion sediment control and stormwater under review by the state. Just hear if you have any questions about the technical aspects of the plan as well as the zoning.
Questions for the applicant?
In regards to Persimmon Road, have there been any agreements or consideration for the maintenance of that road?
There are not any standing agreements, but on behalf of the owner, they are willing to work with the other homeowners along that roadway in order to maintain it. Kind of an agreement similar to the other roads throughout the village.
Okay, so you're stating their willingness to do that?
Their willingness to work with the other owners.
Any other questions? Any further discussion? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, if not, I'm going to call the public hearing to a close and...
Opposition? Is there any opposition?
No, they're -- well, she was the only person that signed. Did anybody else want to speak to this matter? Okay, sir.
My name's Scott Austin, a longtime resident of Corral. My family's been there since the 1800s. I understand development. I understand people want to make a living, want to create, do better. But originally, back when their father, Mr. Twitty, spoke about it, it was going to be a bed and breakfast. So I was fine with that. That's fine. That's a great idea, especially with the village plan. That fits in fine. But then all of a sudden, it became an inn. And from what I understand, there's not going to be any night management there. So those of us who live next to it, what is to keep the noise down? And I guess this meeting's not about that. It's about putting two more bedrooms, which I oppose then. But somehow, it got from a bed and breakfast to an inn, and I'm not sure how. That's my opponent there. And Persimmon Drive should be maintained better, especially for fire trucks, because there's no way to get them back there. If you're going to depend on going to Corral Village, you have to go down Second Drive to get there, and that road is full of people in the summer. And that's really all I got to say about it. I'm not opposed to development. I'm opposed to an inn without anybody being there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak to the matter? Ms. Saunders, could you step back to the podium, please? And I realize this is not a matter for us to decide, but do you know about the -- if there'll be someone else staffed there at night?
I do not think the intention is to have someone fully staffed all the time.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
I have a couple of questions for staff.
Okay.
Before we move to that. Jenny, in the past, when this first came up during 2013, what was the status of what this building was going to be designated as? Was it being designated as a -- as an inn or as a hotel or a bed and breakfast? What was the status of how it was presented in 2013?
I just had to tell you the right thing. It was proposed as a 10-bedroom inn, 10-bedroom village and hotel use.
Can you tell us and the public what the difference is between a bed and breakfast and an inn's definition?
We have that ordinance here. One of the differences, off the top of my head, is that someone has to live at a bed and breakfast.
Okay.
There has to be a permanent resident.
Is a bed and breakfast allowed in the current zoning as it's made conditional now?
I believe so.
Yeah.
And that may be all the questions I have for staff at this moment.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
I am quite concerned about the traffic on that sand road, Persimmon. For those of us who have been up there during the off-season and as well as during the season, it's a high-traffic area, pedestrian traffic. And like the resident said that came up and spoke, he's concerned about fire trucks. Do we recall any concerns at all? This is directed to staff about Fire Department's concern about road width in order to get back to this.
Well, the road width to get back to the property on along...
Along Persimmon.
On Persimmon.
Looks like James Miners only mentioned, who is the county fire marshal, mentioned approving a fire hydrant location, but there needs to be more clarity on how that will happen, but there was no mention in what his notes were at this time about width of Persimmon versus fire protection.
Yeah, his comments weren't related to the width of Persimmon, correct, Kathleen?
No, they were just about hydrant, left to see.
Right. Yeah.
Talking about for the initial application or for this application?
Either.
It wasn't addressed during either application.
So for this application, this is not a requirement of the conditional zoning. That was a requirement of the major site plan. So your TRC comments that you're seeing in your packet are mostly about the major site plan approval, not about the conditional rezoning.
Yeah, during our work session, just so the public knows, we had spoken about the traffic flow on Corral Village Drive and also Persimmon, and that we were concerned about that flow and how it may impact pedestrian traffic along Persimmon, especially because it is not paved.
I have a question for staff, if they have any idea. Where's the breakpoint? You have an inn. Let me think. The definition of an inn as far as occupancy goes, when does it become a hotel? And do hotels have the requirement? It boggles my mind that someone would have anything with stayover guests without someone there, you know, overnight. That just really surprises me. I don't see a big difference between a 12-bedroom bed and breakfast and a 12-bedroom inn. When you get a bunch of rowdies in there, there's, you know, whatever. But there's a big difference with the lack of oversight. And when does that kick in? A 50-bedroom hotel will have, you know, someone there throughout the night.
Right. And my understanding is if it's 12 bedrooms or less, I believe it's 12 bedrooms or less, that you aren't required to have a person stay at an inn. Once you get above that, I believe you are. Is that correct, Kathleen?
I want also, and I'm fuzzy on this as well, but that also had to do with the access to the rooms. If you could access the room without having to go inside of the building, then that also put it into a different category. And so you'll see the site plan on ours, you can just go into a porch to get to your room. You don't have to go into the front lobby. It'll be that.
Those would be regulations that are outside of zoning type, like what you would find in our ordinance. We can read to you. I think it might be good to read the definition of bed and breakfast and the definition of inn from the ordinance. Do you have that, Lori?
I do, and we don't specifically call out inn, but we do have hotel or motel, and it's included in that. Hotel, motel, resorts, lodges, and other similar overnight lodging uses are to be considered to nominate. Synonymous uses. A hotel or motel means a building or a group of buildings in which sleeping accommodations are offered to the public and intended primarily for rental, for temporary occupancy by persons on an overnight basis, not including bed and breakfast establishments or rooming house. Such uses may include microwaves and refrigerators for each guest unit. And then let me -- that was a hotel or motel, but we don't specifically call out inn or define an inn.
I think we actually call it a bed and breakfast inn.
It's inn, exactly. A bed and breakfast inn is a private residence, generally a single-family residence engaged in renting one or more dwelling rooms on a daily basis to tourists, vacationers, and businesspeople, where provision of meals is limited to breakfast for guests only. So one is more of a commercial enterprise, and which I think this would fall into more the hotel motel definition of overnight lodging. And a bed and breakfast inn is essentially converting some rooms in someone's residence for lodging and not necessarily as a hotel or motel, but just a few bedrooms within someone's own residence.
I wanted to also comment about this letter that was sent out that Planning Board Member Ballance just mentioned and highlighted to us, is that this letter that's sent out by Quabel to the property owners state within the second paragraph that the existing conditional -- and I'm quoting this directly. "The existing conditional zoning permit allows for conditional general business, C-GB, including a 10-bedroom bed and breakfast on the property and associated improvements, including parking, vehicular access, stormwater, and pedestrian access. The proposed amendment will allow the site to continue as conditional general business, C-GB zoning. However, the use will be expanded to include a 12-bedroom bed and breakfast facility with the associated improvements." That sounds kind of misleading compared to what we're talking about, making this a an inn. They told the residents in these letters that were sent out, and that was to the point that the gentleman back here mentioned, that they were led to believe that it was going to be a bed and breakfast and not an inn. And that concerns me there. I'm not sure if that was just an error in linguistics here, but it would tend to mislead someone if they read that, and then alternatively, they're being told it's going to be an inn and increased in size as well, or increased in occupancy. I don't know how the staff feels about that, but that concerns me some, that the residents may not have been intentionally misled, but were misled by how this is reading.
Because if that's true, it indicates that someone would be on the premises.
Would be full-time on the premises.
Right.
And would not need a rezoning, correct? For a bed and breakfast inn, they would not have needed a rezoning for that?
That's right. They wouldn't need one.
And that you can do it in residential?
Just a matter of logistics. We do a committee meeting above and beyond state statutes. State statutes require us to publish a legal ad and send letters to adjoining property owner notices for public hearings. Those two things that are required by law and the property be posted will say an inn.
You mean before it goes to the county commissioners?
Before commissioners, yes, sir. Sorry.
Right, so this one, kind of like, hey, we found a mistake, we're going to fix that when we -- before we go. Okay.
And that notification goes out to the property owners within 200 feet of any property line.
Right.
That's right.
There'll be a letter sent, add in the paper, and the property will be posted. As legally required, actually, as legally required, we only have to do two, but we actually do three.
I understand the concern of the gentleman in the back who made mention of the fact that they believed it to be a bed and breakfast when alternatively, it looks like it's going to be an inn, which is, changes it more or less from the residential application of renting out rooms in a home where someone's occupying versus a full-blown 12-bedroom...
Motel.
Motel, more or less. I agree. I'd be concerned as well. If I lived on where you do, sir, I'd be concerned as well with that same fact of how you were told.
Thing that really bothers me is later down the line, if this is approved, then what stops somebody from coming into the village that has the property to do even a larger enterprise if this is successful? Which most times happens up in the village. There are Corral. One thing's successful, everybody wants to do it. That's the thing that really bothers me. Way back when, y'all did a village plan, which I opposed then because it allows conditional general business to be approved easier. And I was opposed to that then, but I went along with it, and I've gone along with everything else where they've done their business and everything. But now you're opening doors. This looks to me that if you're going to call it an inn, it's not an inn, it's a hotel. An inn, in your definition, is a bed and breakfast.
Now, initially, was that, was it approved as an inn, not a bed and breakfast? When we sent out the initial notice back when the commissioners voted on it before?
Yeah, it was...
Because if that's the case, then really, all we're voting on is whether or not we want to increase it by two. If it's already been approved as an...
Wrong, but we were misled that this was going to be a bed and breakfast.
No, no, I believe you, sir.
And I just went to the last meeting, and that's where I realized at the town meeting, this is a hotel. This is not the definition of an inn or bed and breakfast. This is not a definition of an inn or bed and breakfast.
So at the Board of Commissioners' meeting, January 6, 2014, voted to approve conditional zoning from SFO, Single Family Outer Banks, to conditional district general business, subject to the following conditions. The property shall be developed in accordance with the conceptual development plans. On the conceptual development plan, it states proposed 10-bedroom inn, and the use is 10-bedroom village inn hotel.
No, no, I mean the letter that you sent out prior to that meeting.
The letter that the applicant sent out prior to this meeting?
That staff sent out. Yep. Send out, you said you sent out the three letters, you'll do it before this one? What did you send out before the last meeting?
Between the planning board meeting and the commissioners' meeting.
Or do we, or joining, we don't, we're not required to notify planning board meetings only for public hearings. So staff didn't send out a letter for the planning board meeting. That was something the applicant did.
You're asking about the letter before it went to BOC in 2014?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about. Okay. That was the letter that went out to the community?
That was the approval letter that went out after the BOC meeting. The letter that went out before...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Let's see here.
Let's see where you're getting at, Fred.
Yeah.
To see how it was proposed.
Right, initially, yeah.
In the letter that went out to adjacent property owners, December 23, 2013. That might not be the right one. I don't think it's specific. I think it's just conditional general business. Doesn't get to the level of detail of... Yeah. The letter's generic. It says, "TFP LLC has made a request to rezone approximately 1.35 acres from single-family residential Outer Banks to conditional district general business. Properties are owned by TFP and located at 1149 Persimmon Street and Corolla Village Road." Yeah. It didn't get specific about, is it an inn or is it a bed and breakfast?
Bed and breakfast. Okay, that's kind of what I was getting at. So during the initial process, it was sent out, as you guys are presenting that it will be sent out before the Board of Commissioners' meeting this time. So when that was approved, it was approved as an inn, and the residents were notified that, they weren't notified that it was going to be a bed and breakfast, they were notified that it was going to be an inn. And it was approved for 10 rooms. So although the Quavo letter went out and said bed and breakfast, the letter that you guys are going to actually send out will not include that, it'll say that it's an inn. So really, it's kind of semantics. We're just talking about just adding two rooms to an already approved...
Because they would not have need to have rezoned for a bed and breakfast.
Right, okay.
That would be allowed.
Okay.
But a bed and breakfast, in fact, is allowed in conditional general business, isn't that right? As well as SFO.
I'm going to ask y'all one more time. Anybody have anything else to say? Question? Whatever. All right, I'm going to take that by your silence and meaning that we can move along to a motion, please.
I would make a motion to approve PB 1329, as it's consistent with the 2006 land use plan. It's located mostly in a full-service area. Low-impact development techniques are proposed on the site. It'll help to preserve and protect historic character and heritage of the Corolla Village area by incorporating historic Corolla Village architectural details. It's also consistent with the Corolla Village Small Area Plan, because it maintains a desirable building style characteristics and architectural features that promote the character of Corolla Village. Promotes the small village feel by orienting the building entrance to the street, designing parking on the side, and incorporating front porches and pedestrian-oriented features. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides diversity of lodging accommodations in the Corolla Village area, and a vibrant village area will help to promote the historic character and heritage of the area.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second?
Discussion?
Again? Go ahead.
Well, now's the time to discuss.
No, actually, according to Robert's rules, you're supposed to discuss before you entertain a motion. But go ahead.
And you can discuss after a second's been made as well.
Okay, all right, go ahead, sir.
The only one that I know. I am suggesting that your motion be amended to include their willingness to take part in the maintenance of Persimmon Road, and whether or not the TRC recommended... Conditions.
Include that in the conditional?
Yeah.
I would accept that as part of my motion.
How would you like to word the road maintenance issue?
That gets sticky, because it's a... Does the applicant have any suggestions for how they want to assist in the maintenance of Persimmon Road with the community?
We just talked about it. We knew it was going to be a concern, so we just talked about it for about 30 seconds in the room. We still don't even really know who the other property owners are, who we'd be approaching to share in the expenses. So I can't say that we have a plan in place for that yet.
Fred, perhaps that there would be an equal share of maintenance and participation from them, along with all of the owners along Persimmon Street.
Would you base it on occupancy, on bedrooms? It's got to be based on something.
I don't think we would do bedrooms, because then that changes the dynamics of every other owner's calculation. If every property owner on Persimmon has an equal share...
That's kind of what it was called.
Then that is more equitable among everyone.
And not to cut in, but I think sometimes we'll even do, like, Persimmon East has their own association, and then there's Persimmon Middle, which is kind of what you guys are talking about, and then Persimmon West. So I don't even know if you divide it that way. Persimmon West might say, hey, I don't want to help pay for that road. I could use something else, so. Out of curiosity.
I guess the only thing I have to add about hypothetically dividing it 12 ways, because there's 12 dwellings out there, one one-bedroom and seven 12-bedrooms, you know, who bears responsibility for most of the wear and tear? The 12-bedrooms, not the one. So that's my only thing I'm going to throw out about that.
I mean, we could say that you guys would work with adjacent homeowners, those that are right across the street from Persimmons and up to and including probably one or two houses down from that point, at least to the end of the road for maintenance. I don't know how you'd feel about that.
Yeah, I mean, is it too vague to say that we are willing to work to find a solution? And then we can have it a little more firmed up by the time the Board of Commissioner approval comes?
All right, then let's say that, that prior, that the amendment would include that before the Board of Commissioners' meeting, that you will have a proposal...
Written.
Written proposal for how we're going to conduct maintenance on Persimmon Road. Okay. We'll add that to the amendment.
Along with the TRC comments.
Along with the TRC comments.
Mr. Balance, has been amendment to the motion. Do you still honor your second?
I'll still second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, like sign? Okay, PB 1329 has been approved.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, the next item is PB 1617, SB and K Investments LLC, amended conditional zoning, excuse me, amended conditional rezoning, CMRX for 4.01 acres, located on Moyoc Landing Drive, adjacent to the assisted living facility to the east, PIN 000900002190000. The request is for a redesign of the multifamily development by deleting the detached garages, adding attached garages for each unit, and reorienting the buildings and the infrastructure. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm going to kind of go about this a little backwards, but to reorient you with this property, the board saw it about a year ago as a conditional rezoning. It, I'm sorry, I'm having mouse issues here. It is next to the assisted living facility in Moyoc. It was previously approved as conditional MXR, and that was, the commissioners approved it in February of last year. Just run through the zoning there. You'll see it's CMXR, surrounded by general business and conditional single-family mainland. The land use plan has it as full service, as well as the Moyoc Small Area Plan. This is the plan that you saw previously. You'll see this is banks of detached garages that were to serve these units. What happened was, this was done during the surveying phase, the can we get it conditionally rezoned phase. Once that was approved, started working with an engineer, it was discovered that basically there was too much lot coverage to qualify for a low-density stormwater permit. So they needed to reduce their lot coverage, which they have done in the plan that's in your packet here. So basically, what's happened is that whole bank of buildings that we talked about are gone. The ponds have been relocated slightly, and the infrastructure, parking buildings have been reoriented on the previous plan. The buildings face the road on this one. You will see the ends of the units. Let's see here. The applicant has agreed, one of the concerns that staff had was going from seeing the front of buildings to seeing the side of buildings, and the applicant has agreed to add additional landscaping and architectural features. Let me show you. Oops, I will not show you. The renderings are in your packet, and if you will look at the rendering that shows the side of the building, that's what I'm going to be talking about now. He's added architectural features, he's added some additional landscaping. One of the things we discussed with the applicant was adding a wraparound porch in these inn units to make them seem more like single-family dwellings, give that residential feel. And we would like to add that as a condition, but just as a reminder, the applicant has to agree to that for us to make it a condition. We can request it, but he has to agree to it. The technical review committee recommended approval as it was presented. Give you the same reminder that Jenny gave you. I won't read through the consistency statement, but the plan is consistent with the land use plan and the Moyoc Small Area Plan, and you'll see the policies listed in your packet and here. A reminder that we need a reasonableness statement too, and what we are suggesting is that the amended request is reasonable and in the public interest because it creates a new residential use type, which is multifamily, at an appropriate density for the area where county water and sewer are available, and it provides a moderate-cost housing opportunity for county residents within a well-designed neighborhood. And the technical review committee does recommend approval for these, for this. The conditions that you see that are not in italics, this is the one that we're asking to add. These are the applicant's conditions, that the development shall be completed strictly in accordance with the conceptual development plan submitted to and approved by the Board of Commissioners. That the development will consist of 16-unit town, of a 16-unit townhome development with attached garages, one detached garage storage unit, and one detached accessory dwelling unit. The other condition proposed by the applicant is that last one, that the architectural rendering of the townhomes be incorporated into this approval and units constructed accordingly. The condition that staff is proposing is that covered wraparound porches be added to the inn units with sides fronting the street to further enhance the front facade appearance from the street. The architectural rendering shall be revised accordingly. And believe it or not, that is all I have, if you have any questions of me.
So if they flip the houses around and you've got the side there, those units are going to be facing the street as the front entrance. Where's the garage going to be on those?
If you look at the renderings in your packets...
Right in the front?
You'll see the garages protrude a little from the...
On the ones where they face each other, but I'm talking about on the inn units.
They will be on the, not the side, but on the front. Once you pull into the development, your garages are going to be here. There will not be side-loaded garages. There'll be front-loaded garages.
Were there any other suggestions to enhance the end of the buildings besides a wraparound porch?
The applicant offered the cedar shake and hardy plank. There's there...
Not hardy plank.
I'm sorry.
I'm not a fan of hardy plank.
Tell me what it's called again.
We probably do some different textures. We had planned some, the vinyl cedar shake, which we use a lot down the Outer Banks because it holds up real well. I'm not into exterior maintenance. I don't like to paint. I'd rather take a beating.
And this is Sam Miller, this is the applicant.
I'm the applicant. And we probably do a mix of things, like with some board and mat and...
That's the word I was looking for.
We also added some windows to the side units.
Yes.
I think if you look in the rendering, there's a decorative gable that protrudes out of the side, so it's not just a flat gable end. I think it has a, there's probably four or five pictures we provided, I think, in the rendering standing.
Yes, if there's one that zooms into that end, you're maybe...
We put the porches on the end so that when you come up, you kind of come up to the porch as well. And when you drive through community, you'll see houses on the corner as well, where you're going to see the side of it too. And usually what you do in those types of cases is you add extra windows, maybe add a decorative wing gable coming out, you know, different things to break it up. So it's, it changes, it just changes the facade of it, makes it look more in harmony, I would think.
Page 74. Thank you. Page 74 is the rendering that we're talking about.
Any other questions for staff?
Could I speak?
Just a moment, please.
I have a question for staff. On these drawings, it appears that there is a built-in garage on the front of each of these, and there appears to be parking out front of the, I'm not sure if this drawing is, all concrete and/or asphalt between the, let's say, the west side and east side townhouses. Is this approved for parking in front as well as the built-in garage?
Yes. And there's additional parking to the, come on.
In between the units.
In between the units.
As well as at the end.
Yeah.
You know, in our community meetings, we talked about that too, that we wanted to make sure we provided ample parking for things like this, because you're going to have somebody that's going to be walking, and they're going to have to park somewhere.
Sir, if you could just wait till it's your turn?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought you asked me a question.
We're trying to be sort of informal here, but we have to draw the line somewhere. So this is, this is us and staff at the moment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, else and staff, anything else?
Am I correct in saying, staff, that the detached other dwelling unit is for on-site office staff or maintenance person to occupy?
Or short-term rental, say someone's building a house and needs somewhere to live. It's my understanding that that's how it would be used. And that was just one of the examples that was given?
And these are sidewalks in the rendering, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So on this drawing, on those lines that are out in front of the garages, is that sidewalk or is that designated parking areas also? or is that designated parking areas also?
It appears to me that they are designated parking areas, your sidewalk is this.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
The parking is just one continuous slab, is that what it looks like?
Anything else for staff? Okay, we will now hear from the applicant. Please state your name and address.
My name is Sam Miller, I live at 147 Sanderson Court. The short of it was really, we just got into a coverage issue, and it'd be a high-density stormwater permit, which we didn't think long-term, if we did divest the property at some point and not continue as an internal holding, I can't guarantee you what somebody else will do after I'm gone. So in the interest of sometimes simpler is better, we just figured we'd make it simpler. We basically talked through it, and honestly, if I realized that's where we'd be when we did the initial application a year ago, we wouldn't have done it that way, we would've revised it this way. But, so in doing so, the short of it is, we moved the garages from being separate and basically attached into the sixteen units. With that, now when you rent a structure, you have a storage area, rather than you rented a structure and then you had an option for a storage area. So if finance was an issue now, and you had extra things, what did you probably do with it? You probably put 'em on your porch or you stuck 'em where you could, so I think we've probably made some improvement in the property that way by reducing clutter and those sorts of things. Well, also, anytime we reduce the amount of impervious, and we went from like thirty-four percent with the previous approved plans, so I think we're, what, twenty-three approximately? You know, we're looking at eleven percent change, you know, in our coverage. All those things positively affect stormwater, which is obviously a very important topic when you live next to the coast and live at an average elevation of seven feet. So those are the kinda, that's really the most significant things that we did with it. We did make sure that we actually improved the parking above and beyond what was available for, even if you don't consider the garages, we've added two, there's more parking now than there was before. Every unit has storage now. We still stayed with the one accessory unit, which is detached with a garage. The garage back there is mainly for maintenance supplies. You know, if you're gonna have a complex like this, you're gonna have to change filters, you're gonna have to mow the lawn, you're gonna have to do that. It's nice to have somewhere with that stuff, so we maintained that structure next to the accessory dwelling unit. And the accessory dwelling unit is that it remains the same use as what it was primarily before. That use was just, you know, for short-term rentals. Yes, something happens, you know, we had a home burned down in Grandy this week, wasn't that right? We had a fire, if I remember.
Augusta.
Okay, so you know, someone like that might need a place to stay, and there really isn't anywhere for anyone to stay with that. So it's, you know, and look in those benefits. Also, if you're building a home, and it snowed last week and you were supposed to move in, where are you gonna go with your family? There's an opportunity where you could rent something that's just a small furnished efficiency. You know, it's, I think it's somewhere around five or six hundred square feet, so it's not like you're gonna, you know, house tons of people, and it's not gonna be super comfortable, but it's a whole lot better than a tent. So that's really, so the use, the quantity, all those things haven't changed. What we've done is we've incorporated the garages into it, and we've had to reduce the square footage, and in doing that, we did have to turn the units ninety degrees. And that's, I guess, the simple one of the points I can make it, if you have any questions for me.
I have a question. I'm looking at page sixty-nine with the two ponds and so forth, this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the storage shed for these units? I see the garage, I see the porch.
If you'd like I...
I see the patio.
I can come back and point to it, probably easier that way. It's small, but right here is the accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
And that storage unit is right next door, they're...
One storage unit?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, they each don't...
And that's for maintenance, that's not for, not to be a rented piece.
Each unit doesn't have a storage?
No, each unit has a garage, like you see...
Right, they have a garage, but they don't have a storage, okay.
Right, so, correct.
That's what I was... Miss you. Thank you.
I have a question, are you open to staff's recommendation about further enhancing the end units, other than just a gable and...
Yeah, I mean, it's an artistic piece, you know, we had talked about as well that I definitely wanna make a privacy fence on the back of each unit, we're gonna separate each unit with a privacy fence, because if you were renting this as well, you know, and you were sitting on your back porch on a nice, you know, June afternoon, and you wouldn't want it to sit out for everyone as well, you'd want some privacy as well if you were grilling or having a picnic with your kids or whatever. So we have plans to put privacy fences between each unit, and then landscape appropriately, and there are standards in there for landscaping that we have for, you know, within our UDO. We'd definitely be doing those things, at least at that level, if not more, because obviously, if we're gonna rent this, we want it to be as attractive as possible. You know, it's in our best interest as the developers and investors to make it attractive, not to detract from it. We want it to be somewhere you can pull up and you say, yeah, this is where I do wanna live, I'd like to stay here.
I was speaking from an elevation standpoint, not a landscaping standpoint.
I mean, if somebody's got a better idea, I'm open to it. Like I said, I'm just not a big maintenance person, so I don't wanna have things we have to paint, so definitely nothing that requires paint. But I'm open to suggestions.
Are you agreeable to the wraparound porch that we talked about?
I kinda thought we had oriented it that way. Do you want me to run it down the side of the building too, or...
I didn't see a porch, maybe I missed it.
Look on the...
No, I don't see it, not that I have.
I saw a cement slab that came around.
If I can borrow your packet there.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't find a whole packet.
What page?
I guess it'd be page seventy-four is the first one I found like that, my show family was talking about. You do have your porches out there that are covered on the front. They are at the same elevation, because you do have to make these in compliances for any gap accessibility. And then adding the windows, and then what I was talking about, you have different textures, a beauty band, and then also adding some other gables and windows on the end to make it, so it's not just a blank vanilla slab for you. But there's, you can see kinda the porch, it's hidden a little bit behind the trees, or if we set that much noise on the end, we push it in the middle to make it go that way.
Okay. It's not what I had envisioned from what you had said, but...
That's, I don't consider that a wraparound porch.
Oh, I don't, yeah.
Then that may be, that may be my misunderstanding of her.
I mean, if you think running the porch another, you know, around the corner, four or six feet, you know, makes it more aesthetically pleasing, that's fine, I don't have a problem with it on these, on the end units that you see here, the front two at the street. The ones in the middle, I don't see any, you're not gonna see that.
No, no, just the ones facing the street are the ones I thought we'd talk about.
Are you specifically talking about because it's a slab, like sidewalk, or are you looking for posts, or what are you looking for?
Well, when we first talked about it, we talked about a porch that would come around the end of the unit, just to make it look more like the front of a unit, and the way the UDO defines a porch is, it's a roof structure with an independent roof from the, from the dwelling.
How far back is that window, do you know? Just, the one on the side that you added with the, with the overhang?
I'd probably say it's more in the wor of fifteen feet.
Okay.
You know, from the corner up here, because that's probably, that's about a three-foot window, and it's a twin, so you can fit about three of them in there, so it's somewhere around fifteen, eighteen feet, something like that.
For the backside of it, you mean?
From the...
Or to the center of it, from here to there?
Yeah, probably something like that. I think we looked at a different picture.
And the pictures may vary a little bit too, because keep in mind, they're artistic renderings, they don't always, sometimes they do a little more like what they feel than exactly keeping all the dimensions completely accurate.
Just a couple curious questions from me, please.
Yes, Ms. Bell.
As I understand it, most of these units are gonna be, or they're all gonna be for rent?
Yes, ma'am.
And a two-bedroom unit, how many square feet is that?
About nine-hundred-ish.
And a three-bedroom unit?
I think it's probably fourteen, something like that.
Okay. And we talked about it in our work session, the two-bedroom unit is going to rent for approximately how much?
I would guess we're prob, you know, I don't have any comparables, but I'd probably say we're gonna be a thousand, eleven-hundred dollars.
And the three-bed unit?
I would say probably fourteen to fifteen-hundred.
Thank you.
If you're interested, I can get you an application.
Not yet.
Not yet?
I live in Moayok, and I live on Putnridge Road, and right now, that's where I intend to stay.
If somebody's cutting grass, will you maybe think about it?
No, not yet.
I had one of the ladies at the community meeting wanted to know, because she said she was kinda ready to downsize, and she kinda liked the idea, so...
I understand that, we're not ready.
I got you. I'm not either.
Will you allow fishing in your ponds?
You know, if we put a fountain in there, I will break every fishing pole that goes in there, because that fishing line gets around those things and blows the seals up, and those fountains are not inexpensive.
Yeah, we're getting ready to put one in.
Yeah, make sure you have somebody fishing every other pond, if not the ones with the fountains, because as soon as that fishing line, it'll eat the seal up, and then you'd be putting in a four-thousand-dollar pond.
Yep.
Anything else for the applicant? Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I can't see you, sir, but did you have something to speak to?
Yes, ma'am.
To the podium, name and address, please.
My name is Mark Sanford, and I live at eleven-twenty-four Sanderson Road, currently in Chesapeake as a temporary resident, residence, building a home at one-forty-nine Moayok Landing, and a little bit concerned, I'm very familiar with Mr. Miller's building, he builds very nice homes, and we're getting ready to build a custom home just on the other side of the nursing home. And so it's my concern that, I know it's already been rezoned, but it's my concern that we're putting in rental units in a somewhat of a custom neighborhood. Most of the homes in the neighborhood probably run two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars, and they're all three-quarter acre lots, and now we're bringing in, and I understand the need for rentals, understand that, but just a few doors down, we're gonna have rental property, so a little concerned about that. And if you look at the renderings, as I said, Mr. Miller builds very nice homes, but they're very plain-looking apartments, and I appreciate the ideas about trying to embellish them a little bit, but it's kinda hard to embellish a thousand-foot apartment to look much like a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home that's just down the street. So I know that it's already been rezoned, and my desire would be, as a neighbor, that you would just do your best to make sure that it doesn't devalue our property. I'm not sure what's going on with, we've got a lot of building going on behind with the Ryan Homes, a lot of traffic, more traffic, this is gonna create more traffic, I'm not sure what's gonna be done at one-sixty-eight, would like to know, you know, what's happening there as far as the turning and the traffic that's gonna be coming and going there. But I was a little surprised with the idea that it was gonna be rentals, I was thinking it was gonna be townhouses that would be purchased, and actually, until I got here at this meeting tonight, did not know that it was actually rental property that was gonna be held by Mr. Miller and handled by him, and held onto it, until I read some of the notes and heard him say that. So just as a concern, future property owner, don't own property there, and I mean, I own the property at one-forty-nine and getting ready to actually start building a house there, and there's still several other pieces of property, and a couple more homes. Your particular site plan didn't show, but there's three, three more properties that, or actually four more properties that have been planned out there for homes to be built, and mine's gonna be one of the first ones that's in the remaining lots of Phase Two. And that was another thing too, there are somewhat, there's several, each phase has covenant restrictions, and I wasn't sure if this particular development was gonna have the same type of covenant restrictions, if it was gonna be considered part of the Shingle Landing Phase Two development, or if it was considered totally separate. So those are some of the questions I had. Thank you.
This is very similar to our last application in that it's already been approved, and we're simply hearing this application for just a redesign.
Yes, sir.
So in that aspect, then, I mean, it's really just, it's already been approved, and it's sort of semantics. Now, regarding the HOAs or the Shingle Landing, you guys aren't part of any of that, so, but you guys will have some sort of rules and regulations, covenants of a sort, or...
Yeah, well, we're...
They already have a draft, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we maintain, we're maintaining all the properties, so we're not, we're not selling the properties or divesting the properties. And in doing so, you know, we have that with our leases and other things like that, so we're not trying to create a nuisance or otherwise. I mean, I live in the community, I do business in the community, as people well know, and we try to maintain a good reputation for that.
All the common areas maintained by you and...
Yeah, nobody has to cut their grass, I mean, basically, you pay your eleven-hundred, fourteen-hundred, whatever it is a month, and we take care of all the exterior stuff.
So that should kinda reduce some of the concern about, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's all gonna get cut the same time, it's not like he cut Tuesday and they cut on Friday, and they've been gone for three weeks. You know, it's not that kinda thing, and if you did get into selling, then you get into different things, and then covenants and whole other issues and stuff like that as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any discussion from the board?
Did we really get a definitive answer about whether the applicant was willing to create the porch that you envisioned? I don't think we heard of it.
It's really what the board is after, that's a suggestion from staff. If the board agrees with that suggestion, then we'll talk about it some more, if not, we'll move on.
So at present, this porch that is actually not wrapping around according to these renderings, it appears that they just are just a lean-to section that comes off of the main roof that covers a small portion of the concreted area out front of the dwelling, but there's nothing on the side as of yet, according to the renderings.
That's, that's my understanding.
That's why I asked him about the distance to the window. It's significantly more than what he suggested, six, eight feet, be closer to twenty, I guess, if he was to encompass, include that window in the, some type of a design, yeah.
I guess what was, what was technical review envisioning when they added that?
A wraparound porch, I don't know that it had to go the entire length.
I mean, were they talking about a rail with pickets?
She's more talking like the overhang.
Yeah.
Just the overhang.
The UDO actually defines a porch, and I'm doing this from memory, so please forgive me, but it is a roofed structure that does not share a roof with the building itself that stands independently, so you would have columns or something to support that.
There definitely has to be a column, first of all.
Yeah.
From an arborist's liberty, we have hold-down standards, you know, for, we're a hundred-and-twenty mile an hour wind zone. From a construction standard, you know, we're gonna have to run a half-inch threaded rod or a five-eighths rod every six or eight feet respectively, you know, to hold the porch down for uplift characteristics, so the arborists just kinda took some liberty with it, and sometimes it's just not better to, okay, thanks for the nice picture, I appreciate it, rather than trying to fight and explain all the semantics to them. So it's gonna be pretty darn close to that picture, but it'll have a couple posts, and there are probably two for hold-down on that property, especially with that wing exposed. There'll probably be one at the corner and probably one in the midpoint of that, that would hold that porch down for uplift, if you understand what I'm talking about.
So you are, I mean, are you putting the porch slash overhang from the front to side, or no?
Sure.
The...
It would be just on those two end units, obviously, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, it's two units, it's really irrelevant to me, you know, from that perspective. I think I, I wouldn't wanna run the porch the whole length of the unit, I think that would look strange.
Maybe, maybe to the window, or, you know...
I don't know that I'd even run it to the window, I mean, it really comes down to different preferences of what you'd like to see. If that's what you'd like to see, great, I'll put a porch on there, tell me how long you want it to be.
How far would the, I mean, how far would...
But I, I think we could do other things with landscaping or otherwise to make it very presentable. I mean, keep in mind, this is what I'm gonna show the general public when they come to rent this unit, so I'm gonna wanna make it as nice as I can make it, and make it look as attractive as I can. If y'all think a porch is the way to do it, I'll stack hands with you, and let's agree on how many feet.
I don't, we're just simply looking... I don't. We're just simply looking at a recommendation from Technical Review that says covered wraparound porch is be added to the end units.
I'd almost rather take those end units and do a little more detail in them, if you're concerned about them maybe being too plain or something like that. And maybe we do some, like a decorative freeze band down the bottom and on the top, like what you're talking about. You've ever seen like a freeze board more in like a craftsman dress or those types of things. So underneath your soffit, you run maybe like a four-inch white band around to dress that up. It makes, it gives you more of a pop. It ties your, you know, white corners together on your houses. It just, I think we could do some more things with that rather than the porch, but, and I don't even remember where the porch came up to wrap around, but I think having it on the corner is a great thing. I wouldn't want the garage there and we swap the garage, I think we had the garage rooms in there and we moved the porch. But I think bumping the porch out and running around the corner may look a little bit strange, but that's, there's different tastes. That's why.
Yeah, looking at that rendering, I don't even know how you would do a porch that would actually improve the aesthetics of that and?
Just for reference, Lori pulled up the definition of porch. It's a covered projection parentheses, can be glazed or screened parentheses, from the main wall of the building with a separate roof that is not used for livable space.
You would almost have to go in order for it to look aesthetically pleasing, the entire length of it and?
That's kind of what I'm concerned with is it, and then what do you do with it? And then the other thing I have is if I put that porch out there, now somebody's going to sit on that too. And what are they going to put out there? And I don't necessarily really want that down the front side of the building either with, you know, okay, so maybe they have children and they decide that's where they want to put their bicycles. Well, now I can create language that says, you can't put your bicycle on the front porch. It needs to be in the garage. But then if I don't put a porch there, I don't have to police it either because you're not going to do it.
And just think about a porch on the front of a building. And that's what we were after. We want it to look similar to the front facade of a building. And that's something the community had brought up as well.
I get where you're going, but I like where you're going more, rather than having it look like it was just thrown on there. I think that a lot can be done with the end elevation to make it pop, as you say, to improve it. Over, this is pretty plain Jane what we're seeing right here.
I would agree with that, that, I mean, a porch going halfway just would not look good. I've seen them like that and they just look thrown together.
Yeah.
But putting more into the aesthetics of that front so that it pops and so, yeah, I think that would probably be a better way to go and a little bit cheaper for you, I'm sure, but?
Or perhaps some sort of plantings that grow up to 10 or 12-foot height. And also that's the south side of the property. It's going to get direct sun almost all day long, which is going to, could be a problem for an occupant and them paying electric bills and whatnot. But having some sort of growth coming up that shields that entire side, it's almost like hiding it more or less instead of beautifying it more.
How would you guys feel about that instead of a porch more, more towards?
We'll defer to the planning board's wishes.
I like the idea of landscaping.
I do too.
I don't like it tall, though. I like it down lower where you can see the structure. I'm not saying it's got to be, you know, ground, but I definitely prefer to landscape the side and do some things with the elevation, you know, and banding and stuff like that.
Is it just two of the buildings that you have to do that?
Two end, two end caps.
Because the other end of it?
You really don't see because there, you'll see the roof line up on the top, but that's about all you're going to see.
No, but that's what I'm saying. The other, you've got four buildings.
Yeah, because it's two and then two right behind it.
Right, and the two right behind it don't have to have anything on that because that's not the street or anything.
Yeah, I mean, we'll do some mild landscaping in there, but the flair, the pizzazz is going to be more out front. You know?
The side is your front.
Right. You know, I mean, even from the nomenclature, how we named the area, I mean, the property is named Shingle Landing Villas, not, you know, just apartments. You know, we want it to be more of a higher-end product with that. I mean, we're going to have it from finishes, perspect, interior stuff you're not going to see, but, you know, it will have tile floors in the kitchens and the baths. It will have waterproof laminate, which we do a ton of. And sometimes you look at laminate, go laminate. If you haven't used the waterproof laminate, it's an incredible product from a durability.
Indestructible.
Oh, it is. I mean, you can throw it in the lake and pull it out a week later and it looks identical. We put it in $2 million beach cottages, you know, on the oceanfront because it holds up to the sand and water and things like that. But we'll also have granite in the kitchens and we'll have, you know, hardwood cabinets and we're probably even going to put granite in the bathrooms. Because in rental homes, you know, people are going to have curling irons and different things like that and they don't always care about your product. But if you set a hot curling iron, a piece of granite, it won't burn it. But if you put it on a solid surface top, it will. So, you know, we're spending the money in the finishes and those sorts of things where it makes sense. Can lights, even though they're more expensive, they don't get broken by people because they're up inside the ceiling and stuff like that. So a lot of our finishes and stuff will definitely feel higher-end for those purposes.
How amenable would you be to doing another rendering of just those end caps for the Board of Commissioners?
That's fine.
To show some of the?
Show some landscaping improvement and?
That and whatever else you want to do there.
And stuff. Yeah, that's not a problem at all. If you, yeah, just if you give me a chance to show that, hey, I can give you something that's going to be nice. I mean, we've tried to do nice communities and other nice projects as well and I think you'll be happy with it. I don't, we don't plan to disappoint with it.
Where do I get an application? Sounds good.
Go to our office at 111 Kurt's, our commercial drive, you know, it'll be.
Are the handicap accessible?
Thank you.
We will need to run a credit check, though.
There you go.
No problem. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. In describing a type of landscape buffer, what would be the appropriate terminology for whatever type buffer that would be to put along the side? Would that be a Type A, Type D?
There is not a buffer that is required there. Type A is your least restrictive buffer. That's a few shrubs and a few, the smaller, understory, sorry, I lost the word. That's a few shrubs and some understory trees, or you can set a rate of whatever you would wish.
Per linial foot.
Per linial foot, yep.
I'm thinking of things like, you know, again, I want it to look nice, but I don't want to do a ton of maintenance on it. You know, I'm looking for value in it. And a lot of times, you know, in this region, what we'll plant that does real well is Gulfstream gardenias. You know, you'll get the red, the crimson red, you know, as you come into more of the fall seasons. We'll do golden yewanimus. They hold up real well in this area. We'll even talk about maybe hollies and stuff like that, too. So you get that, that steady green backdrop with changing colors of the yellows and the reds. You know, and you have to think about what your siding colors are going to be as well, because you don't want, you know, red siding, you know, with red plants out front and stuff like that. But, you know, the things that sell and buy are the more earth tones, the neutral colors, you know, your clays, your, you know, your granite grays, your flagstones, you know, with your whites. And mixing with those types of plants, you know, usually you pull one real nice and probably a darker brown or a blackish mulch, not the red, red kind of mulch. I'm not a fan of red mulch. I just kind of feel like a McDonald's with red mulch. No offense to anybody who likes it, but, but that's the kind of things that I think we, you know, when I look at doing that side, we probably do. And we might even mix, you know, where the downspouts come down with like, you know, some rocks and different things like that. You know, the more fist-sized, what we used to sometimes refer to as like a river rock or something like that. So, and those kind of things, when we mix those textures with it, it creates a real nice feel. It's how we do, typically do our model homes and stuff like that.
How will the landscaping that you're talking about now work with these water-holding receptacles that appear to be at the corners?
We end up looking at, it's part of the ordinance and what you do in the plan. If you want to do this, then you got to do that. You got to pick six of these and two of them and one of these. And that's, was probably one of the most thought-provoking ones.
In other words, if we're asking you to do this, we don't want to jeopardize the?
Yeah, it's something that we're going to probably try to buffer with the landscaping, to be honest with you. I'm going to try to make them go away where you don't see them so much with the landscaping. So the things we'll plant around them will be taller, you know, to shield and buffer that. And we may even get creative with privacy fences and make an extra wing or something like that, so it kind of blends in.
So those cisterns are partially above ground?
Yeah, they have to be. We just don't have the water table to support it below ground. They'll pop out of the ground if they go dry. And with that, then you can, on a conservation side, you know, you can use more of like a weeping or a seeping hose, you know, that you can lay in your flower beds to promote growth off of those things that way. That's usually how we'd probably envision using those cisterns. We'd collect, you know, rainwater pointed it overflowed and then at that point it would discharge an alternative path. And then those would flow out, you know, slowly through a weeping hose design.
And that makes sense. That way you have somewhere to direct the water and it doesn't cause erosion because you have the plantings there that perhaps would absorb that additional water.
You're putting it to use, yeah. They can't, they don't do it real good when you give it to them through a fire hose. God bless you.
Any other questions?
Thinking of a more decorative landscaping than a buffer?
Yeah, that's, I think that's what we're all talking about.
Hollies are nice. They stay green all year long, you know.
Yeah, and you get some red berries at times and stuff.
Some color there and they're very low maintenance. You cut them down once a year and trim them down and you're, that's about all you have to do with them.
Any other questions or discussion?
Basically just put a plan together is what we're talking about for the VOC meeting and make sure that they're okay with it. Okay, not a problem.
I think if that, yeah, if that gets brought up in the motion, yeah.
Bring a new rendering that shows what's your preference.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And once I get that, I can send that to y'all so you can see it too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Close it down.
I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I made a motion already.
Are you only allowed one?
I have my quota for today.
But you did so good on the other one.
I did, I did.
I'll make a motion to approve. Lost my place here. Give me a minute. Yeah, approve the amended commission conditional zoning request. It's consistent with the 206 land use plan because the county water and sewer are available to the site. And this will help grow these systems in policy ES1. It's a density appropriate for the location. Adequate public facilities are available to service this project. It's located in the fastest-growing area of the county that continues to evolve as a full-service community. The amended conditional rezoning request is consistent with a Moyoc small area plan because there will be a sidewalk connection to the assisted living facility. Park and subdivision to the east. Infrastructure and service of needs in the community are met. Impervious lot coverage is reduced and stormwater is properly managed. And it is compatible with rural atmosphere and transitional areas in a small-town and Main Street feel.
Would you like to amend your motion to say the conditions about?
Thank you. There is, the conditions to be met that were set forth by the TRC and that the applicant will, will present to the Board of Commissioners a amended end elevation to show the features that we've discussed.
Along with the landscaping, perhaps?
Yeah, well, that was all part of it, yeah, landscaping and, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Just for clarification, any changes to the statement of reasonableness? We need to include that as well.
What changes? Oh, okay, I didn't go into the reasonableness, that it is in the public interest. It creates a new type of residential use and multifamily at an appropriate density to the area where county water and sewer are available. And it provides cost, moderate-cost housing opportunity for the county residents within a well-designed neighborhood.
Thank you.
I still second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Nope.
I appreciate Mr. Miller willing to do those other items that we had talked about tonight as far as the additional renderings for the Board of Commissioners and being willing to install this vegetative buffer, so to speak, on the south sides of these two units. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. PB 16-17 SB and K investments, the conditional rezoning has been approved. All righty. The next item is the election of chairman and vice chairman, and Tammy's going to handle that.
I have to say thank you, Madam Chairman, for the last time, but okay. We'll open the nominations for chairman of the planning board. Do we have any such nomination?
Before we do that?
Go ahead.
Do we have anybody on the board that has any burning desire to serve in either of the positions?
Crickets. All right, any nominations for chairman?
I do have a nomination.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Fred Whitman for chairman position.
Thank you, sir.
Any other nominations for chairman? Okay, we'll close those nominations. Congratulations.
You got it.
I've just been nominated. There's no vote?
Oh, it's, what's that word?
An unanimous tie.
There's no opposition and you're willing to accept? Would you like them to vote? All in favor of Fred being chairman?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open the nomination for vice chairman. Do we have any such nomination?
I'd like to nominate Shay.
Any other nominations? We'll close the nominations. All in favor of Shay?
Aye.
Okay, passed unanimously. Congratulations.
I guess my initial question should have been, does anybody not?
Not want it.
All hands will be on deck on that one.
What is that word?
All right, I'm going to give you back those.
Got adjourned now. Or comments, comments.
Okay, are there any announcements?
Lori, would you like to update us some on the land use plans progress?
Planning staff, county staff is still working with Destination by Design, our consultant, to get a nearly final draft together. Currently, we are working on the, what we're calling the KAMA matrix to making sure we hit all the requirements that KAMA has for our land use plan and we're working through that right now. We're hoping soon to get a almost final draft out for, for planning board and Board of Commissioners and the Land Use Plan Steering Committee to take one final look at and as we go out, take that back out to the public for a comment. So we're getting in the short rows, except that short row keeps getting longer when we're, we're looking at the KAMA requirements. So?
Has KAMA already read it?
No. We're wanting to, they gave us a list, like I said, they gave us a list of requirements. We know those, we're going to have to add some maps and make sure, and in this list of KAMA requirements, we need to give them the page number that these are on. So the consultant, we're working through that. We're making sure any, we are adding some maps and some information, bits of information that wasn't explicitly said the way KAMA wanted it to say. So that's what we're doing now and so we know we're going to have to address those before we give it to KAMA. So then we're going to give it to KAMA once we've completed that process. Like I said, an almost final draft.
Does it go out for public comment again before it goes to KAMA?
We'll probably do, probably send it to KAMA and, and at the same time, take it out to the public for a second round of input. take it out to the public for a second round of input, so that we would make use of the time that KAMA's got to review it.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements?
Use this one.
I know. It's too bad this doesn't come off. I could hit somebody with it.
I'm doing, sorry, one more quick update. We will be, staff will be undertaking an update to the Unified Development Ordinance to address Currituck Station. You guys will be part of that.
Does that include the name?
Please let it include the name.
That can be between the planning board. Staff's going to step back away from that one. No, we will be using Kim Lee Horn, the, the same consultant that did the, the Megasite Master Plan. We, we are engaging them to help us through this process. So, this is, stay tuned. You will be asked for input and be reviewing language later this year.
So, the rewrites just addressing that section?
Yes. Not countywide, no, not yet. But ideally, we would be able to use some of this language for maybe some other parts of the county, or specifically, we're wanting to get into some design criteria that we would like to be able to cite for different areas of the county. So.
Well, again, let me, let me thank you all for the lovely plaque and the, brought me to tears resolution. I, I appreciate your, I appreciate the, the realization that what this has meant to me, to do this. And I'm so very proud of Currituck County and I so very much want it to be done right. And we will be dealing with that name, but you know, that's in the future. But again, thank you all for your cooperation and, and the support that you've given me. And I guess I will be serving as a regular member until I hear something from Commissioner Gilbert. She's told me, she said, you, you stay until I call you. So, I'm like, okay.
Problem with that.
So, I mean, I don't think that'll be forever, but you know, I don't know that it's always easy to find somebody who will serve. So, that's kind of where I am with that. Anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Surprise everyone.
Oh, man, you're the one that you, that was awesome, Dave.
Really, yeah.
Because, oh, you're talking about that? Oh, yeah, that was awesome.
Thank you. That was good.
I don't think I heard of you.
I didn't have a clue.